I'd like to begin legislative session 2019-24 for December 3, 2019. Those that like would stand and join us in Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
[Inaudible]
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections on the minutes for the legislative or open work sessions? And yes, any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Minutes are approved through the consent agenda. Mrs. Hurley, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first order of business this evening is the election of officers pursuant to Charter Section 303, which states, "At its first meeting in December of each year, the council shall elect from among its members by a vote of the majority of the total number of council members established by this charter, a president and a vice president. The president, or in his absence, the vice president, shall establish the agenda and preside at all meetings. On all questions before the council, the president and vice president shall have and may exercise a vote to which each is entitled as a council member." Tonight is the election of the president and vice president. We'll start with the nominations for president. Are there any nominations for president?
I nominate Councilman Dodd.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Again, any other nominations? Seeing none, Councilman Larry Dodd is elected as president of the Waucomaco County Council by acclamation. Congratulations. Mr. President, would you like to ask for the nomination on vice president?
Yes, is there any nominations for vice president?
I'd like to. Bill McCain.
I got one nomination for John Cannon, did I hear?
Bill McCain.
And you got a nomination for Bill McCain. All right, let's start with Mr. Cannon, starting with the left. Mr. Hastings?
Nay.
Nicole? Yeah, your name?
Yay.
John? Oh, yay.
Yes.
No.
Bill.
Chair votes aye.
Did you want to do the roll call for Mr. McCain as well?
Yes. Starting with the left.
Well, do we have to?
You have a majority.
We have a majority, don't we?
We do have a majority.
So there'd be no need to.
Okay.
I thought Ms. Ackley said nay. She said yay.
She said yes.
Can you say?
Yes.
That's okay. I thought she said yes. Okay. Thank you for your nomination.
All right. Somebody has to have something.
You guys do need to switch seats.
Sure.
And let's just confirm that John Cannon is our vice president by a majority vote at the county council.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's take two minutes to regroup.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Can I thank Mr. President Cannon? Or do we wait till?
If you think you want to, Larry, you're president.
Well, I would like to thank Mr. Cannon for his five years of leadership on the county council. I think he's done a good job. He's done a lot of work. A lot of people don't realize what the council members do and what the president and the vice president does. It is a lot of work, a lot of meetings, and I think he should be applauded for his five years of service. So, thank you, Mr. President. And I do want to thank everybody that's supported me, and I plan to work closely with each of you, and anything that you want or need, I'll be glad to work with you. So, thanks very much for your support.
I want a new chair.
Sorry?
I want a new chair.
You want a new chair? We're working on that.
I'm not quite sure what this thing does.
So, next on the agenda, we have Mr. Taylor, Bob Taylor, council attorney.
Yeah, this is second reading this evening. It's bill 2019-08. It is an act to amend Waucomaco County Code, Chapter 174, nuisances to add Article 3, balloons, Section 174-14 through 174-17, to prohibit the release of balloons into the atmosphere. And this is public hearing tonight.
Okay. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on behalf of this ordinance for this hearing?
Hello, thank you very much for bringing this to fruition this evening. I'm Carrie Bunting. I am the president and CEO of the Ocean Pines Chamber of Commerce, but I'm also just a concerned citizen who has been trying to get this motivated in local counties and municipalities and even now statewide. So, I do appreciate Bob Culver for bringing this forward to the council's attention, and as Mr. Taylor said, this is our third reading of this tonight, and I do hope it goes through. There is proposed legislation doing a statewide balloon release ban going forward. It is a bipartisan bill going forward in January, and the question was asked last time, well, why should the individual counties be concerned if it's going to be brought up at the state level? The point is that we don't know it's going to go through at the state level. So, if individual counties move to pass such legislation, that almost forces the state to go statewide. So far, Queen Anne's County has passed this same legislation. I do believe Montgomery County is moving toward it. I'm trying to push Worcester County, but Waucomaco definitely is farther than any of those others in that process at the moment. So, if there's any individual, like, technical kind of questions, I definitely could help answer those, but I do appreciate the council bringing this forward and considering it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on behalf? All right, need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a, who's made the motion?
Josh.
Who made the second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Yeah, I have in a memo to the council suggested a slightly different language in regard to the state legislation that was just mentioned. It's really just a technical suggestion. It doesn't change the idea of the language that's in there now, which talks about if the state legislation goes through, that our bill would be, uses the word synchronized with it. And that was the general idea that I mentioned back at a work session a couple months ago. However, I believe that a little bit more specific language would be preferable, and that's on page 45 of your PDF file in your books. I can read that. It's pretty short. It would change Section 174-17 in two ways. First, it would change the heading, and the heading that I'm suggesting is applicable state regulation, and it would change the text, and the text that I'm suggesting is, "If conduct regulated by this article is subject to regulation by or pursuant to state legislation, that regulation shall apply, including the prohibited acts and penalty thereunder." And I think that makes it absolutely clear what we're trying to do. Synchronization, that's the idea, but I believe that the more specific language is preferable.
So, Ms. Hurley, would this be an amendment?
Yes, it would be an amendment to the bill.
Of course. Go ahead. Mr. Taylor, would you also be recommending a second amendment where you noted that Article 174-16, should we change to Section 174-16?
I think in the bill that's on the table that that change was made.
That was that.
Yeah, that was just sort of a typo error.
Entertained a motion to amend legislative bill, sorry. Make a motion to amend legislative bill 2019-08 to reflect the text as described by Mr. Taylor in the brief book.
Okay, got a.
As discussed in the discussion here today.
Got a motion by Mr. Cannon to amend legislative bill 2019-08. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, we're gonna vote, roll call, Mr. Hastings?
Aye.
Ms. Ackley?
Aye.
Vice President Cannon. Councilman McCain?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. The bill passes.
The amendment passes.
Just for the amendment, so now we do. Okay, thank you for that correction. So, do we have another roll call? Okay, thank you. Starting with Mr. Hastings again.
Aye.
Ms. Ackley?
Aye.
Vice President Cannon?
Aye.
Councilman McCain?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, this bill has passed as amended legislative bill 2019-08 has passed as amended, so thank you. Thank you for your work. All right, is there anything else?
That's all for me.
Okay. Ms. Hurley, do you have anything else on that?
I do not.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Hi, TJ Mountford-Heburn. First of all, I wanted to thank the council for overriding the veto of the county executive on the tank moratorium. I appreciate that, as do many of the citizens of Heburn. I understand also the citizens of Daggsboro, also Daggsboro Road area appreciate it also. They're also fighting the smell of the distribution. Does anyone know why the county executive voted against it? Was that ever clarified?
The veto?
Yeah, the veto.
Oh, well, TJ, we don't, if you don't mind, it's not for.
I just never heard an explanation.
Public comments aren't open for exchange. We can answer that question for you very clearly after the meeting.
Typically, we don't go back and forth.
That's fine. Again, thank you for veto, for writing the veto. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any more public comments? With that said, that concludes public comments. Are there any council comments? Councilman Hastings?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to recognize John Carolyn Hall, who are here, former councilman, John Hall. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
And of course, his amazing wife, my neighbor, who used to be on the Salisbury City Council, was city council president, I believe, for a while. Thank you for being here, two amazing people. I'd also like to thank the new leadership, wish you luck, Mr. Dodd, and thank you again, John, for your many years of service in that position. And third thing I'll say is Giving Tuesday today. As of a couple of minutes ago, we had, here on the shore, we had $132,400 raised locally for local nonprofits in our community. That was over 1,500 individual donations to 102 nonprofits here working in our area. So, that's part of the Shore Gives More campaign from the Community Foundation of Eastern Shore. That's a really amazing amount, and of course, people can donate straight till midnight, but $132,000, that's really something to be said for our area, so thanks to all the folks who have done that.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. Council Lady Ackley?
Congratulations, Mr. Dodd, on your new office, and thank you, Mr. Cannon, for your years of service. And, Mr. Hall, it's nice to see you here, Mrs. Hall. I had the honor of attending the 180th anniversary for the Rockawak Methodist Church this past week. It was an amazing celebration to see something come from such a small church and grow into such a wonderful community. They had Murph the Surf, who was the notorious gem theft there, speaking of his time in jail and how he now speaks to middle school students about turning their life around, and it was very inspiring with what we have going on in this county. And peer to peer, speaking with his parents and speaking with his children and seeing how he's able to help through his ministry was, it was very nice. So, Michelle?
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate President Dodd on his new leadership role with the council. Appreciate you stepping forward. I also like to thank the council for their support over the last five years. I think we did a lot of great work over the last five years, and I'm certain and very confident that we'll continue to do more.
Councilman McCain?
Yeah, a couple of comments. John, thank you for your past leadership, and congratulations, Larry, on being elected president.
Thank you.
Couple of quick comments. The Councilman Hastings and I, along with Ms. Hurley, we attended the Board of Education, and the county councils, and state legislators met yesterday in Snow Hill, and actually had an opportunity to hear the state superintendent of schools, Dr. Karen Salmon was there, and she spoke and kind of updated us on what's going on at the state level, and talked about, obviously, curling, and, but it was very well attended. Also, I want to offer congratulations to, it's happening right now, actually, I couldn't attend the event, but Steve Leonard, the CEO of the hospital, was being honored tonight by the Boy Scouts. They're having their annual meeting tonight, and they're honoring him for his commitment to the community, and Steve does a wonderful job at PR, he leads from the top and very well-respected, and, you know, very fitting for him to be honored by the Scouts. And lastly, on a sports note, SU football is still in the playoffs. They play again this Saturday. You know, they've won their first two playoff games, and they're still in the mix, and so the game's here in Salisbury, so please go out and support the Seagulls.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Councilman Davis?
I also like to congratulate the president and vice president on their newly positions. I also want to thank Dallas, the people, the neighborhood of Bailey and Hern Lane. Want to thank you for the hard fought, for the lights that are finally got up in the neighborhood. It looks great, and I guess the people in Kellington are waiting, but they thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Councilman Holloway?
Yes, I had the pleasant opportunity to participate in the Pittsville Christmas Parade Saturday night. It was the second year for the Pittsville Christmas Parade. Eastside Chamber of Commerce put that on, and they did a great job for the second year. It was amazing, there was more people there in Pittsville than it's been there since they were the strawberry capital of the world. I think there was a lot of people there, so look forward to it next year, and that Chamber of Commerce down there is growing and doing a great job, and thank you. And, Mr. Dodd, Mr. Cannon, congratulations. Thank you, John, for your service. Look forward to it, John. Larry, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilman Holloway. As I progress in this role, I'm gonna depend on Lynn and Laura to keep me straight, so until I get things rolling, thank you for your assistance ahead of time. So, I also want to recognize, and I was gonna do a thank you, Councilman Hastings, Councilman Hall, it was great working with you, and it's great to see you back at these meetings, and former city council, were you vice president?
President.
President of the city council. Thank you for your service, and thank you for attending our meetings. Also want to recognize our Board of Ed member, Mike Murphy. Thank you for attending. We're not gonna be talking Board of Ed stuff, but thank you for attending. The Pittsfield Parade, I didn't get to attend, but I looked at a lot of pictures. It looks like it's a growing event, so I think I'm going to attend next year. We do have the Salisbury City Parade coming up this Sunday after Mako. A lot of us will be attending the Maryland Association of Counties Conference in Cambridge this week, so look forward to working with our colleagues there. So, that's all I have on council comments. All right, we're gonna adjourn, and I've gotta read John Cannon's statement. All right, "To adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions, Article, Section 3-305B7, to consult with legal counsel to protect the attorney-client privileges." All right, so now we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
You need a motion.
I'm sorry, it is open first?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is that right? Like I said, keeping me straight. Thank you. All right, open work session first. I thought we only had closed session, but that's okay.
And the gavel. The gavel to adjourn.
Get your hand up.
The gavel, okay. Thank you. All right, open work session, the deed easement of power, Delmarva Power and Lake Company for the property located on the east side of Walston Switch Road, Mr. Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Good evening, Weston Young.
Good evening. Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Dallas. This was a Public Works request, but periodically, we have requests from Delmarva Power for easements.
Yeah, so this is a, they have some existing equipment out there on Walston Switch Road between Route 50 and Old Ocean City, and what they're looking to do is just expand that just a little bit so that they can get their equipment in and out easier. I believe right now, it's set up as basically a straight in, straight out, and they're looking for more of a U-shaped driveway, and they're also gonna revise some of the drainage distance that goes through there to help with some flooding issues along that railroad track area.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, I'll make some comments. It's my district, and I, when I read this, I went over and did a walk around. It needs to be done, because that's a heavily traveled road, and some of those trucks trying to get in, it takes a long time for them to get in, and I don't know if there's been any accidents, but there's an opportunity there for, when the trucks have the roads blocked up. So, I'm not sure just exactly what they're gonna do as far as drainage, you know, they're gonna. Yeah, there's a couple of pipes are going in, but with the new driveway, they'll have a pipe along Walston Switch, but then also, they're gonna clear up, clean out some drainage that runs along that easement. There's no chance of them being able to put an access, what you call a drive-off access, like they do in new developments? They're not gonna do anything like that, I guess, are they? No, it's, from my understanding, it's just a U-shaped driveway. Just widen it, okay. That's fine. That'd be a big help.
All right. Any more comments or questions?
Mr. Taylor, did you have some recommendations on the deed?
Yeah, I do. Two different areas. First, some what I would call boilerplate-type protective provisions for the county. There are three of them. They're on page 52 of your electronic briefing book. I won't read them, but I will just say they're protective. There's an indemnity provision, so that if something happens on there, and the county would become involved in court or in a claim, there'd be indemnification. There's a disclaimer of any warranties by the county, and there's also a provision that the county can continue to use the area and grant other easements or licenses on it. So, those things, I think, would be unobjectionable as far as DPNL is concerned. I mean, if you're using somebody else's property, you ought to be prepared to indemnify them if something, something untoward happens. The other thing, though, is it does mention in there about drainage improvements, and I understand they were just discussed to some extent. I think that that ought to be particularized in the document as to exactly what those drainage improvements are going to be, and what property is going to be drained to and from. DPNL does have a station right adjacent to this property, I believe. I don't know whether it's intended to drain from that onto the county's property or just what, but whatever it is, I think it ought to be specified. And again, I don't think this is unreasonable. I think this would be very ordinary if you were granting an easement on your property to somebody else.
And just to clarify, we do have a full set of site plans, grading plans, erosion and sediment control plans. We just don't typically show that level of detail on an easement document. It's usually just the general dimensions of where the easement takes place, but we do have a full set of plans that are available for yourselves or the public to view of the improvements.
Is there anything in writing for the drainage?
Yeah, it's all on, it's all on the, it's all on the site plans. In Dallas, that was, that's very close to the area where they have the Beaver Run Tax Ditch, you know, that we've had all the problems. Does the water drain that way, or does it drain to the other branch? There's another, there's two ways it can go there. It can either go down that road to the Beaver Dam Ditch, or it can go to the south in access to Beaver Dam Ditch. So, which way does the water, which way does the water go? We don't need any water going, any increase in water going to the north, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. What I'll say is we're not altering the drainage path. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you if it goes south or north. I'd have to actually look at the drawings, but I know we're not altering the path. From what I understand, and Lee Outen's been out there and visited the site, and he's aware of some of those drainage problems, there was a crushed pipe, basically, that was, well, it was a crushed pipe, from Delmarva Power accessing in and out of there. And there was also some, when they were, did some of the initial early work, they had tried to kind of clean the site up, but inadvertently piled up some material that was blocking flows, so there's removing that material. It's also replacing the crushed pipe, and because they're adding in what the state considers impervious area with the gravel driveway, there has to be a small stormwater pond associated with it as well. I was wondering if they improve the drainage of that piece, that particular piece, will that increase the flow to the north where we have the problems, I guess, so that creates another. I was probably gonna look at the plans, so. Yeah, I'd have to go back and look to know if it drains to the north or not.
But if it has a stormwater structure as part of it, typically, the state regulations, you have to discharge equal to existing conditions, so it's usually sized to capture.
Yeah.
And in some cases, you have to treat existing untreated impervious, so if they have no stormwater out there now, which is likely, they may have had to oversize it.
Yeah, basically, when the plans come in, usually, especially for the drainage issues, I'll sit down with Road Superintendent Lee Outen and have him look over, because he's really familiar with what these drainage. Right, we spend a lot of time out there. Yeah, and I basically say, look, Lee, take a look at the plans with the engineers. Let me know if you think they need to do anything, and the engineers will incorporate Lee's suggestions on them, and that's. Well, I was wondering if this was an opportunity to improve something out there where we've had the issues in the past. That's, that was a thought, you know, so.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, I think the issue regarding the drainage could probably be handled by simply referring to the plans in the document, that the drainage will be in accordance with blah, 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 date, who prepared them, number of sheets, I mean, it could be a simple sentence, probably.
Are you okay with Mr. Baker's statement, or do you want to see the plans yourself?
Well, I think, you know, I probably can't tell much more about them than anybody else here in the room, although I have looked at those kinds of plans before. But no, I'm going on their expertise, but I'm simply saying, I think that the document should limit it to that so that it's not open-ended.
In a situation where they may want to add a pipe or increase the size of a pipe, that's gonna deviate from the plan, so if you get specific, which we're not usually specific in these documents, we're gonna have to come back before you so that they can, say, improve the drainage out there. So, I don't know. I think, I think we're fine as it is. This is the standard easement. We have many of these with Delmarva Power. They're fairly consistent, so, you know, it would deviate from existing easements we have with Delmarva Power. have with Delmarva Power.
Yeah, I can understand where Councilman Holloway was going with that because we do get a lot of flooding out there.
And that goes to where Dallas works with Lee Outten and other people, our engineers, to see what are the impacts? And if there's existing flooding to an area, we don't want any development, even something small like a driveway expansion to, to cause additional flooding. So, that is something we're cognizant about.
I really don't think that there'd be any problem if it would say substantially in accordance with the plans that I, the way I just explained it. Then if they have to move a pipe two feet or something, I don't think that would be a problem. So, I think the chance of coming back in would be pretty remote and if it did, so what? I mean, you'd then address it.
It'd be a deviation of the approved plans.
What I was getting, what I was getting at, the way, I know the way that tax ditch runs. If the water runs to the north from this piece of property to the tax ditch, it's going to increase flooding problems where we have that tax ditch crossing Walston Switch Road. If the water runs south from this piece of property to the ditch, it goes into-
Mr. Holloway, if you can speak into the-
It goes into, it goes in, I know this, I used to hunt all this property. I grew up around there, so I know. If it runs south, we're fine. There's no problems with increasing the water flow. That, that's kind of what my question is.
Sure. Well, if it has stormwater management where it didn't have stormwater management before, it is capturing flow coming from that. So, even if it did drain to the north, less water should be draining to the north if it's designed appropriately.
If, if we have, unless we have a 10-year flood like we've had before.
And again, I'd have to go back and, you know.
I think it's probably pretty simple to look at.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, I can go back and look, but what I can say is that, again, we're not deviating from the existing flow. So, if it did drain to the north originally, it is still draining that direction.
Yeah.
And switching that flow to drain another direction, it, the water, you know, water flows where it wants to flow. If it wanted to flow north to begin with, that's the way it went. If we wanted to start sending it to the south, we would probably have to regrade the swale next to the road to get the grade to make it go that direction. And again, this is just, was simply an easement for-
I'll go back out there and look at it.
Driving planes.
Mr. McCain?
Well, I was just going to say, Dallas, you've already stated it's not going to alter the, the flow.
No, the, the, the problem with the drainage on the site, the existing drainage on the site was that there were obstructions and that this construction and the improvements that Delmarva Power is proposing, we specifically made them clean it up so that it would not hamper that flow anymore.
Okay.
Could I have Weston?
Sure.
Could I have your permission to talk to Lee about this?
Oh, please.
Okay, please. I know we've been restricted in some cases from talking to employees, but I'll give Lee a call, if that's okay.
Sure.
In reference to Mr. Taylor's recommendations, you had made the comment that it was deviating from the norm, but I was wondering if maybe it was maybe improving on what we have. Because a lot of times, you, you keep repeating the same documents over and over again. Certainly, someone is going to come up with a better way maybe to, to change that mousetrap.
Sure, sure. And I do not know if the proposed changes have been run by Delmarva Power because, yeah, we would have to, we'd have to consider that.
Yeah, I thought they were somewhat innocuous. It was just a matter of erring on the side of caution, really.
I'd be, I'd be very surprised if they would have an upset stomach about this. And I might add that in the materials I have, I actually cut them down somewhat. It's fairly typical, somebody is using your property on an easement to require them to have insurance to protect you, but since this is DP and L, I figured they've got insurance. I don't need to. So, I've, I've tried to not gild the lily, but put in stuff that I think is, is very basic and essential.
I don't, I don't want to add these to this legislation and vote on it tonight, but others running this by Delmarva.
Sure.
Do you have the, do you have what he shared with us tonight?
Yeah, I got it with the brief book.
Should've been getting to it soon enough, you could've run it by Delmarva, but-
Yeah, my, my biggest concern is getting specific with the drainage improvements because if they then have to change the size of a pipe to improve flow or expand the size of the stormwater pond they have out there to capture more flow, we're going to have to go through and get approval for an easement modification.
And I understand your reluctance to want to do that, but in some cases, this might be the chance to improve the problem out there. And it might not be, it might not even be a problem, but we know we've had problems in that area, so.
Sure.
I understand what you're saying. Are there any more comments? Any more questions?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Young? With that said, we'll go into open, or I'm sorry, we'll go into closed work session to consult with legal counsel.